Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Tuesday, February 20, 2018. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and we have several additions to the agenda. Two under the consent agenda, approving training and travel expenses. And under new business, item number nine is approve amendments to the International Falls Fire Department Relief Association bylaws. Council's pleasure with the agenda and the additions. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agenda with the additions. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes of the February 5, 2018, regular city council meeting. Motion by Counselor Pearson.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote aye, and the minutes for the February 5 meeting are approved. Thank you. Move to the resolution on the payment of claims and transfers. We have transfers to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund of $9,951.67, to the permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $62,500, and to the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,760.42. We have accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls of $507,209.28, airport commission claims of $5,729.94, and library board claims of $7,125.59. Council's pleasure with the resolution, approving the transfers and the claims payable. Moved. Motion by Counselor Drowe.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson to adopt the resolution. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing no discussion, Chair would place the question.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, and the resolution is adopted, approving the payment of claims and approving the transfers. Thank you. Go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda? Seeing anyone, will you have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for audience participation? We would move to the consent agenda. We have three items under the consent agenda. Approve and allow the necessary expenses for the Street and Water Commissioner to attend the GIS training with Woods, Smith &amp; Knowlting in Alexandria on March 9. Approve the training and travel expenses for the Fire Chief and Fire Engineer Harris to attend the 2018 Fire Officer Training School in Duluth, March 16 through the 18. And approve the training and travel expenses for three paramedics to attend the Teaching and Learning Conference in Hinckley on April 19 and 20. Council's pleasure with the consent agenda. Motion by Counselor Pearson to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowe. Chair would then place the question on the consent agenda to the council.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. There being five four and none against, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to new business. Item number one under new business is to approve the Northeast Minnesota Regional Advisory Committee bylaws.
Mr., I'll make that motion for discussion anyway.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to approve the bylaws for the Regional Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowe. You attended that meeting, Counselor Drowe?
I attended the ECB, the Emergency Communication Board. I did not sit through the RAC meeting, the Regional Advisory Committee. I am not appointed to that particular committee.
Is there anybody representing us?
Yes.
Fire Chief and Nathan, no?
Nathan.
Nathan is the representative, and you're the alternate?
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns with regard to the bylaws that before the?
I really don't have anything.
I think you're probably correct, Chief. Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Jackson, second by Counselor Drowe, to approve those bylaws. Further discussion?
Well, I'd like to just congratulate them for one of the most bureaucratic terms I ever heard that's rather dense, is interoperable. I mean, honestly.
This is a communication group?
They could improve their communications. What about just communicating between agencies? At least I can understand that. Can I strike that and put that in there and make that suggestion? No? Okay.
I'm not sure where it would get us.
Satisfaction. Anyway, so what is the relationship between the EAC and the RAC?
I don't know, Counselor Drowe, if you can?
Okay, I'm going to be as harley as I can be on this. Previous city councillor that held the seat that I currently have is Pete Kaler. And Pete works with the radios as his position with the county, and I'm very certain that having that elected official in that role was a very, very good choice for the city. Myself going to that meeting, 97% of the information was over my head because I don't work with the radios, I'm not on the emergency response teams. It's just, I sat through the meeting, I absorbed as much information as I possibly can, but the acronyms and a lot of the information that was being thrown at me was over my head. But I do think that we had a huge asset in Pete Kaler, who had that position before me because he knew the position, he knew what he was doing, because he's in that role as a day-to-day job. Past that, I can tell you that it was a very complicated meeting for me to sit through.
I've been at meetings like that where it's really a meeting of professionals, right? You're not in your field. What, does the county have members on there?
Yes.
Is Pete representing the county?
Pete was there representing the county, Sheriff Hedlund was there representing the county, and we had members of our city that was representing the RAC. Lots of acronyms at that meeting.
My real concern here is that if we had a disaster, which, you know, that we had a plan, especially of communicating with the public, so that it was coordinated and there was no confusion being wrought from our city council anyway, so, you know.
I think that, and please, Chief, if you can, help me on this, but it seems like this, the meeting was more about making sure that we have radio contact with everyone, everyone's on the right frequencies, everyone's able to communicate during a crisis. There was vast knowledge about the Rainy Lake oil fire. It was discussed at that meeting based off the radios and some things that had happened through the course of that evening. So, this isn't the emergency response, this is the communications, the radio systems that were, that are being used in big emergencies or emergencies across the board. Correct.
We need a city council. It sounds to me like it would be better if we had somebody from the city.
I agree, however, it is in their bylaws that it has to be an elected official.
A lot of this has to do with local money, so a lot of this is a funding stream or a grant stream.
The city is, really isn't contributing any out-of-pocket cash to the effort. It really is overhead and staff time. And that would be true of all the entities there, right?
All those funds are distributed through all.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, the Chair would place the question on the approval of the bylaws for the Regional Advisory Committee.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, there being five four and none against, the bylaws are approved. Thank you. Item number two under new business is to approve the snowplow license applications for Doug Wickstrom and Joanne Smith.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion on the motion or the license applications. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried. Applications for snowplow license are approved. Thank you. Item number three under new business is to consider the recommendation to appoint candidate for the position of office clerk beginning February 21, per the memo and Local 49 Union Labor Agreement.
I'll make that motion to appoint Lisa Riggs.
Motion by Counselor?
Present here.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to make the motion to appoint Lisa Riggs to the position.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. City Administrator, did you have any sharing?
I did, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just, the Deputy City Administrator, Officer and myself participated in the interviews. We had applied for the position, and we came to the conclusion that she's for the position, and she started at 90% office clerk to pay, and a Local 49'er, so it would be subject to. We're very pleased to have Lisa here today, and I actually invited her to be at the meeting and just say a few words, background experience and.
Please, Lisa, would you come forth, and if you would?
Sit right here?
Please.
Okay. Well, hello, I'm Lisa, I've met y'all. I've lived in International Falls, gosh, since 1990, I think, so I've been here for a little while, raised my three boys in the area, and I've worked at United Healthcare for 25 years, and I was recently laid off last fall unexpectedly. And so, I sat this position based on the career history that I had and all of the, you know, skills that I had learned through United Healthcare, and felt that I was qualified, and was nice to meet with Betty and Ken and Brad, and so happy to be offered the position. So, if you guys have any questions for me?
Very good, well, welcome, and questions for Lisa?
No, but I think you bring a skill set that certainly is welcome, and I'm happy that you're joining the crew.
What'd you say?
I thought you said I seconded.
Oh, I seconded, yeah.
I think we'll have our full office staff back.
We will, we'll be very happy about that, and we're happy to have Lisa's skill set in the office. I think she's, everyone's on board, and she's going to start soon.
Betty's pretty happy over there.
Wonderful, well, thank you, and welcome to the, we'll have a vote, then they can give you the official vote.
Aye.
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 Yay, aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and appointment is complete, and welcome to the City of International Falls. Item number four under new business is to approve the resolution for the application and permit for a one to four day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Rotary Club for the annual men's hockey tournament at Cary Park Arena. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion on the motion, the motion or the resolution. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the permit for the temporary on-sale license is approved. Thank you. Item number five is a similar resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for the Rough Grouse Society, the Voyager Chapter of International Falls to conduct a raffle on March 30, 2018, to be held at the American Inn. Council's pleasure with that resolution.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Drowe.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the permit for the raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number six under new business is to declare the existing police department vehicles number three and number six as surplus upon delivery of the new vehicles. Authorize the advertisement to the vehicles for public sale, and approve a one-year inter-fund transfer of $56,103 from the Shade Tree Reserve for Capital Outlay to the Police Reserve for Capital Outlay for the purchase of the new vehicles from Worley Motors. Counselor, do you want to?
Oh, I would love to make this motion.
Very good. Counselor Drowe?
Practice with it.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to declare the police squads three and six as surplus vehicles upon the delivery of new vehicles, authorize the advertisement for the surplus vehicles for public sale, and deposit the proceeds from the Police Reserve for Capital Outlay, and approve a one-year inter-fund transfer of $56,103 from the Shade Tree Reserve for Capital Outlay to the Police Reserve for Capital Outlay, machinery and equipment to fund the purchase of two new vehicles from Worley Motors.
Well done, and I'll second.
Okay, having heard that motion by Counselor Drowe and the second by Counselor Jackson, further discussion?
Does everyone understand what my motion was on that one?
I do.
Okay.
Well, more than I would, yeah.
Further discussion? Chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
I would vote yes, there being four four and one against, the motion to declare this approved. Thank you. Item number seven under new business is to approve the engagement letter with Van Arwarden Associates for the Gatsby 6768 Actuarial Services for the City of International Falls and the Fire Relief Association for fiscal years 2017 and 2018, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Has to be done, right?
The Administrator, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this, actuarial study, and essentially necessary as part of the General, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board requirements, to try and ensure that our pension line, Fire Relief Association members, so, well, we entered into it two years ago, the contract was good for two years, and the way, have a off year and then a full actuarial evaluation, so, 2017 is a year where we have to do the full, that's to do, so $2,300 to do that. Next year, provided there aren't any significant changes in the Fire Relief Association retirement off year and the estimated, we're essentially the same agreement, have somebody do an actuarial study for us. Most of the work won't be completed until our auditors complete their work for the fiscal year 2017, and so that'll happen sometime late this spring or early. It was in front of the, or the, Fire Relief Association members board.
The Gatsby regulations are federal regulations for pensions?
The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, by adopting those, and this is a requirement as part of their, has to make sure that viable.
For the edification of the taxpayers, how is the pension fund funded?
Fuddled into the Fire Relief, have a series of bylaws, which I believe, by that means?
By the state.
2%? I don't know if it's tax, or 2% fee on fire insurance?
That's correct. State of Minnesota has a mandate that 2% homeowners insure.
Volunteer fire department to have a pension plan.
If we're going to change the pension payout by 10%, as presented in this packet, will that then change the fee for the, after that, because will that constitute a significant change to the pension plan for the Gatsby analysis?
I'm not sure.
Going from $2,900 to $3,300, a 10% increase.
The city council had approved that change in October, 16, allegedly.
Oh, okay, so.
We're updating our bylaws, that was one of the changes that had to be.
And will that change mean that the fee will be higher in the second year out? That's all I'm asking?
Well, I don't believe it will, because it's happening in the year that they're doing the full.
Oh, okay, it's happening now, all right, all right. Thank you.
We've had sufficient information and discussion, is there a motion then to approve the engagement letter?
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jackson.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowe. Further questions or discussions with regard to the engagement letter for the Actuarial Services for the city and the Fire Relief Association? Hearing none, evidently we've had enough information. Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, and the engagement letter is approved. Thank you. Item number eight under new business is to consider the Public Works Committee recommendation to approve stabilizing a parking lot in 2018 on the Donahue property per a site plan, and to purchase a monument per the Minnesota Monument quote of $8,105, with the city's cost of $7,000, and the Donahue family cost of $1,105.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Move to table that.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to table.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion second by Counselor Drowe. Discussion.
I believe that we discussed this earlier at our public work, or I'm sorry, at our Budget and Finance meeting, and I, I think that the conversation that we were having on how we were, what we were bringing to council tonight is that we wanted to table the monument piece, but I don't think there was any discussion on the, on the parking lot, and I think we could still move forward with the parking lot.
You want to make an amend? Let's see, I'll, okay, I'll change my amendment then, if I may, or my motion, Mr. Mayor, to table just the portion that pertains to the monument. That decision.
Okay, so the motion from Counselor Jackson is to table the purchase of the monument. Second by Counselor Drowe.
Correct.
Further discussion with regard to the motion to table? Yes, I would, I would have preferred the previous motion to table both of those. I've had three calls this past weekend with regard to the agenda being in the newspaper on Saturday, and citizens concerned about spending additional dollars for the Donahue property, given that the city has paid out nearly $100,000 previously, although we did have a, an ad hoc committee that looked at the property and the contract and how it should be used, and their recommendation was to do a, to do the parking lot. They outlined with a plan to do that, and the contract also calls for a monument to be placed at the parking lot to give the history and the credit to the Donahue family. So, take these as separate items, but the first is the motion then to table the purchase of the monument. Further discussion?
Go ahead, Frank. Is there going to be another motion?
Parking lot.
Okay. I just, this is such a hard thing for me, because I want it just to be in the past. I want to finish any contractual obligation that we have to the Donahue property, so we can move forward and not keep bringing up stuff that happened years ago. The conversation that we had at our Budget and Finance meeting this afternoon was in regards to the Donahue agreement. On page two of the original Donahue agreement that the city had signed years ago, Part Two says that the city will erect a property recognition of the Donahue family, or Donahue farm similar to the Pat Roach Landing, and it will provide a brief history of the Donahue farm in recognition of the gift. This information was new to me when we made the recommendation to the council. we made the recommendation to the council to get a different monument, and we have not did our due diligence as a city yet to find out how much that boulder with the, what's similar to what's at the Pat Roach Landing costs. So, we need to get information on our side before we do any more work on this particular property, and that's why I'm okay with tabling the monument piece of this, because I don't think we, but all I want to do is have the Donahue property done and move forward. But I think we have to do our diligence and find out how much the memorial would have cost if we did what was in the agreement.
Please.
In the agreement, it doesn't specify that we have to build a big parking lot either, does it?
No, it doesn't. That, I think...
What it says is we have to erect a monument. It doesn't say anything about a parking lot.
I think it calls for a trail and a monument in the contract that Counsel Doba was quoting from.
And so maybe both parts of that should be tabled, but the first I recall stabilizing the parking lot comes from one user anyway of the trails, thought that it would be an improvement for people who do use the property, and as I understand it, there are people who do. So, there was that aspect of it that...
The ad hoc committee and without naming, there was probably, I believe, seven persons on that committee. They came forth with the recommendation to do a parking lot and maintain a trail and monument. Counsel did, in the budget last year in 2017, we had set aside or approved $14,000 for improvements there. Further discussion? Motion then on the, the question on the motion to table the monument and do further due diligence on that. More question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion being five, four, and none against, the motion to table is And we have the Public Works Committee's recommendation by the ad hoc committee that's recommending the stabilization of the parking lot at the, I don't remember the county road, but be the county road that leads to the golf course. It would be off of that.
I think that, Mr. Mayor, I think that kind of a project needs to be put in the context of our Public Works projects. I mean, is this something that goes to the top of the list? I'm not sure. I'm not prepared to say it should be there. So, I can't make a decision at this point.
Parking lot would provide access to a trail, and that's probably the reason that the ad hoc committee, City Attorney Sherman really chaired that group, and he is not here tonight, and so maybe holding it to another meeting and hearing from him as part of that ad hoc committee may be worthwhile.
So, is it tabled? Can we let it drop, or do you want a motion to table?
Well, I think it's on the agenda for action by the council, and I think that there should be some type of action, whether it's a motion to table or accept the recommendation of the Public Works Committee. A motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Counsel Pearson to table the stabilizing of the parking lot per the site plan for the Donahue property. Is there a second to that motion?
I don't know. Valley, do you want to second it?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second by Counsel Jaxa. Further discussion? Counsel Doba?
We formed a committee to come up with a recommendation of what to do with the property, and they said we should stabilize the parking lot. They, you know, and then we budgeted money to stabilize the parking lot, and then now here we are questioning, well, what are we going to do with it? We have to finalize the stuff on the Donahue property at some point. We formed a committee to give us ideas of what to do with it. Then we, and here we are. Now, we're questioning what we should do with the parking lot, if we should put the money towards it or not. I say we take the recommendation and we move forward. I know that that's not the conversation that we're having right now. It's whether or not to table it, but I think we need, we budgeted the money. We had a committee decide. We said we were going to take their recommendations, and here we are, questioning how long we're going to kick this can down the road.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Jaxa?
I, you know, I think we do need to take the recommendation of the committee, and we have budgeted dollars. The question is how to schedule it, what's the Public Works projects, how does this fit in? Therefore, I mean, I suppose we can accept the recommendation, but what does that mean? What does that entail? Are we then thereby committing labor at this particular juncture this summer to doing this project without looking at what else is on their list? Is it realistic to expect that in this cycle, that that parking lot be stabilized this year? So, I mean, that's why I tabled it because I haven't heard, that's why I seconded Counsel Pearson's table, because I just don't think we have enough information to see how this impacts Public Works. I mean, I guess we've agreed already that we're going to do this by setting aside budgeted dollars for it. To some degree, we've had consensus on that, right?
Further discussion? I would say, Counsel Jaxa, I think your question earlier was a very good one. Where does this fit in the Public Works priority list? And that was one of the calls that I received this weekend, was that the citizen was concerned about improvements that are going to be made to Highway 53 and frontage roads and bicycle trails, and said those are more important, those have a higher priority in that individual's opinion than the parking lot at the Donahue property. And so, they wanted to be sure that that was considered, and so I think, I think the question of where it fits in the priority is very relevant. Further discussion?
Let it be noted that the mayor and I have agreed.
Hearing no further discussion, the Chair would then place the question on the motion to table, the stabilizing of the parking lot and the recommendation of the Public Works Committee.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
I would vote yes, there being four, four, and one against. The motion carries to table the parking lot. Thank you. Move to item nine, and that's to approve the amendments to the International Falls Fire Department bylaws. Fire Relief Association bylaws. Counsel's pleasure with the amendments to that bylaws.
Move.
Motion by Counsel Briggs?
Second.
Second by Counsel Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the amendments to the bylaws? Hearing none. Chair would place the question on the motion?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and approval is given to the amendment to the Fire Department Relief Association bylaws. Thank you. Any other business, any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. See the Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, thanks for the counsel's attention. I passed out a... From the International Falls Snowmobile Club, International Voyager Snowmobile Club, and they had their annual, actually it was a 10th Annual International Speed Run Against Cancer. They raised money, and you can see they posted the results on the sheet that I passed around. I wanted to bring it to the counsel's attention. It was kind of interesting to see people from 36 different cities, the province of Ontario, Wisconsin, and even somebody from as far as Oklahoma participating. So, it does bring more people and more economic activity to the area, and you can see $1,338 at the event from also freewill donations, and they pay all those proceeds to the community cancer nonprofit organization here that helps benefit local cancer.
Radar run certainly seems to attract a great deal of interest and has been a successful event for quite a number of years. I'm really pleased to get that report. City Administrator, thank you. And we'll continue to work on the negotiations with the state mediator. The attorney is absent. We'll move to department heads. Chief Mastin?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Manasa?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Administrator?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Counsel Doba?
Just that we have scheduled a Budget and Finance meeting for 2:00 on March 5. And a second note, there was so much stuff going on in our community this last weekend. I mean, it was ridiculous how many things we had going on. So, just putting it out there, if you want to be involved in your community, there are ample opportunities for you to do so, because there is a ton of things going on in our community.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the franchise KCCTV has hired a new contractor, that is Darcy Sullivan, and so she's present at meetings doing taping of the sewer board this morning and the meetings that occurred today. We're looking at a plan to taping via, pay a flat fee to high school and college students to pick up some change and actually take the meetings. It would be beneficial from two aspects. That would be that we would have probably a good bench of tapers, and it would provide experience to students on how government functions. They would be a witness to that in addition to getting video media. That educational opportunity, just wanted to tell you that. There has been a rather negative letter in the paper about contracting out of the county, and KCCTV was looking at an arrangement where we could provide live coverage of Bronco hockey games, and that was the extent of it. And we may still be doing that. We're still working on that. But I just wanted to clarify what the effort is. We have hired Darcy Sullivan right now, and we're looking at a position for her down the road, depending upon, you know, how we proceed. But just wanted to assure you that we're moving forward, and we're excited about some of the opportunities that we're exploring.
Thank you. Further committees? I would just, the mayor's report has been passed out, but just would bring attention to a couple. I did attend the Minnesota Mayor's Together Meeting in Duluth a week ago, and that was hosted by Mayor Emily Larson there. Did have an opportunity to speak with the Northland Foundation Director, Tony Sirditch, and they made a contribution to our housing study, which was great to see, and so that was very, very helpful. Discussion by the mayors in our meetings was one, some of the similar challenges that we face in developing a workforce for the community and for the jobs that are open in many of the businesses here. Affordable housing, which we're looking at through the housing study, and then further the blight, and this seems to be hitting some of the first ring suburbs in the Twin Cities, and then also many regulations that the legislature seems to come up with for cities to comply with. The other meeting that I attended was the Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, a meeting that was held in Evlith, and we have a significant road project that will be done here in the area, and that's the replacement of the overpass at the Rainier and the Canadian National Railroad rail tracks that come through the city of Rainier. That will be done this year. The project has already been awarded to contractor KGM, so that will be a very big project that's being done there. As well, it was interesting to learn that the city of Duluth is going to be having electric buses. Several of its buses are going to be electric serving the city of Duluth this year, so we'll see what, how those function. With that, anything further under council committees, boards, or commissions? And the City Administrator, the charter commission is meeting on March the 7?
That sounds correct.
Wednesday evening, I think is the, that's a 5:00 meeting, I think they'll be coming up.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Wednesday at 5:00.
Good. Thank you. Go to the audience. Anyone in the audience that has something to bring the attention of the council? Hearing none, we would just remind you of the correspondence from the Department of Health, and that the next regular city council meeting is Monday, March the 5. There being nothing further to come before the council at this time, we stand adjourned. Thank you.